Senator Tony Adams.
Senator Uggins.
Vice Speaker Cruz.
Senator Duennas.
Senator Lim Tiako.
Senator McCready.
Senator McCready.
Senator Morrison.
Senator Munya Barnes.
Senator Respechau.
Senator Rodriguez.
Senator Siniklas.
Speaker Wampat.
Senator Yamashita.
Madam Speaker, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Mr. Majority Leader, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that we waive items two, three, four, and five of this session agenda.
Hearing objections, so ordered.
And then we just did the roll call. So on item seven, I moved that we approved the legislative journal dated October 16, 17, and 21, 2014, and to approve its subject to corrections.
Hearing objections, so ordered.
And I move then that all the communications and petitions be appended to a session journal.
No objections, so ordered.
As well as messages from Imagallah in Guam.
No objections, so ordered.
As well as reports of standing committees.
No objections, so ordered.
There are no reports of select committees. So on item 12, I moved that bill numbers 413-32 LS through bill numbers 415-32 LS, resolution numbers 483-32 LS through resolution numbers 485-32 LS, as well as certificate number 196-32 LS through certificate number 198-32 LS all be given its first reading.
No objections, so ordered.
In my first motion, Madam Speaker, and before I make this motion, I want to call to the body's attention a letter that I sent you dated today. Its subject is request for waiver of public hearing for bill number 415-32. And my request is based on this bill that I've introduced at the request of Imagallah in Guam. As we all know, the governor has written you a letter, although he didn't call for a special session, he attached a draft bill and he suggested that the legislature take action on that bill. And so given your continued leadership to want to address the things that are needed to be addressed within this territory, that this bill was introduced and that you've called us into this regular session, it's not a special session, and the subject matter of this session to which you called us into is based on the governor's bill that he transmitted, to which I introduced as chairman on rules. And so I wrote you a letter, ma'am, asking that you waive the public hearing requirement.
Thank you very much, Senator Respechau. And in response to your request, and that after carefully evaluating the request to waive the requirement of the public hearing on bill 415, that I do certify it then that it meets one of the requirements set forth in section 2103A of Title II Guam Code Annotated, and the requirement for a public hearing is hereby waived.
Yeah, thank you for that waiver. And so having done that, then this bill becomes eligible for placement on the session agenda. And I move then to place bill 415-32 on the second reading file.
On a motion, hearing objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, there are no legislative concurrence, there are no consent calendar. So at this time, I request that we proceed to the second reading file.
Mr. Vice Speaker, you're recognized. We're on the second reading file?
Yeah, I'll do it.
Oh, you will, okay.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker and colleagues. As I had mentioned earlier, this bill 415-32 is introduced from the Committee on Rules, Federal Foreign and Micronesian Affairs, Human and Natural Resources by the request of Imagallah in Guam, the governor of Guam, in accordance with the Organic Act of Guam. And the title is "An Act to Appropriate the Sum of $4 Million for the Payment of Law Enforcement Overtime." And given that this is an appropriation measure, I move that we resolve into the committee whole and that we identify our acting chair of appropriations to preside over the committee whole.
On that motion, hearing no objections, so ordered. We're going to take a brief recess to set up and call in the administration then to address the body.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. I'm sure, I think everybody up there is part of the governor's fiscal team, is that correct? And you've all seen the legislation that the governor has sent to us, or you had all participated in the writing of that legislation, is that correct? Someone?
Yes.
The first section, it says, "Notwithstanding any other provision of law, the sum of $4 million is hereby appropriated from the unappropriated unalotted fund balance of the tourist attraction fund and from the surplus balance of the 2007 general obligation bond series A for the following." Senator Munya Barnes is head of TAF, so I want to ask questions on the 2007 bond. Which one, if you can tell me, how much is left in the 2007 bond general obligation bond? Okay. Would it be possible, Madam Chair, for them to share with us that, not so much the trustee statement, but the breakdown? Because I think the members of the legislature should know what this 2007 bond was. And maybe somebody, either Mr. Carlson or Mr. Rios, can explain to the membership what the 2007 bond series was and what it was intended for.
I was going to ask you that. Vice Speaker, what we'll do is take a minute break, and I'll have the Sergeant of Farms make up.
Well, I think they can explain it while it's being copied.
Is that the only copy you have, Mr. Carlson, in front of you? I'll take a one-minute break. Copy so that...
I'm sure, I think everybody up there is part of the governor's fiscal team, is that correct? And you've all seen the legislation that the governor has sent to us, or you had all participated in the writing of that legislation, is that correct? Someone?
Yes.
The first section, it says, "Notwithstanding any other provision of law, the sum of $4 million is hereby appropriated from the unappropriated unalotted fund balance of the tourist attraction fund and from the surplus balance of the 2007 general obligation bond series A for the following." Senator Munya Barnes is head of TAF, so I want to ask questions on the 2007 bond. Which one, if you can tell me, how much is left in the 2007 bond general obligation bond? Senator, if I may, if I can provide that information later, there's a lot of requests from DOE, and I don't have that detail with me today. I can get that for you.
Okay. I really do think if any members of your staff are out there, if they can start calling over to try to find out what that money was for. Because I know the speaker would love to have some of this money to give to DOE. So anyway, I'm just looking at this. As long as I have you on, Benita, as the, I'm not sure if you have a new position as of 1:00 today, but on September 16th, as the Director of Department of Administration, you issued your monthly cash balance report. Are you aware, are you familiar with that? You, every month, you send out the cash balance report, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Joe, can you distribute this? Ms. Manglonia, on September 16th, you sent this cash balance report to the Speaker. I call your attention to the last page. Yes, I guess it's marked page, no, it doesn't have page, it's the last page. Am I reading this correctly, that there are two bank accounts, I mean, two bank accounts for the 2007 bond? Series A, and one bank account on September 14th had $4,447,050.62, and the other GOB 2007 series bond fund had $1,379,217? Is that correct?
Yes.
Is there a reason why that number is different from what was just reported by Mr. Carlson from the trustee?
Sir, it's not that different when you look at the number that's penciled in on the spreadsheet where it says $4,400,000.
It's the same, it's the timing.
So the numbers are relatively close, all things considered. That is $4,447,088, and we have $4,447,050. So we're talking about $38.
Okay. So you have encumbered 2.8. Do you know what the encumbrance is? Somebody's written it in, so it has, somebody should know. What's, why is 2.8 encumbered?
Are you talking about?
You told us to look at some of the writings you have, and on the last page... As the, I'm not sure if you have a new position as of 1:00 today, but on September 16th, as the Director of Department of Administration, you issued your monthly cash balance report. Are you aware, are you familiar with that? You, every month you send out the cash balance report, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Joe, can you distribute this?
Ms. Mangalonia, on September 16th, you sent this cash balance report to the Speaker. I call your attention to the last page. Yes, I guess it's marked page, no, it doesn't have page, it's the last page. Am I reading this correctly that there are two bank account, I mean, two bank accounts for the 2007 bond? Series A, and one bank account on September 14th had $4,447,050.62. And the other GOB 2007 series bond fund had $1,379,217. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is there a reason why that number is different from what was just reported by Mr. Carlson from the trustee?
Sir, it's not that, it's not that different when you look at the number that's penciled in on the spreadsheet where it says $4,400,000.
It's the same, it's the timing.
So the numbers are relatively close, all things considered. That is $4,447,088, and we have $4,447,050. So we're talking about $38.
Okay, so you have encumbered 2.8. Do you know what the encumbrance is? Somebody's written it in, so it has, somebody should know. What's, why, why is 2.8 encumbered?
Are you talking about...
You told us to look at some of the writings you have, and on the last page, where you told me that I should look at the 4 million, you have written in encumbered 2.802.
You add the second page on the bottom across. The big number that stands out is 2.625 million for GPSS, and then 77,000 for the hospital, which I will also note, if you look at the bank statement, the hospital drew down that $77,000 in the September timeframe. So the encumbrances are on page two at the bottom, and they're summarized in that handwriting. So you have the bank statement from August, you have the encumbrances of the projects that were identified and funded, and in August, the difference was 1.644 million. That has changed, based upon the information that we've provided to you because of the two withdrawals, one by the Department of, DOE, that I pointed out earlier, the 1.192 in, on September 24th. And then also, you'll note that on page, page three of the bank statement, you'll see $77,055.52, which corresponds exactly to the encumbered balance at the bottom of page two of the spreadsheet. So you can see that the hospital has exhausted its appropriation to the penny.
Okay. And did GDOE withdraw all 2.6 or just 1.1?
I show them with a balance of about 1.433 million.
And how come on page two, it says that they withdrew their, they encumbered 2.8, I mean, 2.6?
Yeah, that's, that's the running total, Senator, of what they're, still have available to them, based upon the appropriation.
But I thought you said the encumbered number is running those numbers across on page two and adding them up.
The total, yeah. That's how you get on this 2.802.
Okay. So total, we have 1.3 left in this account?
I, my number is, sorry for my pencil scratching, but it's 1.433, just from that. That's still available to DOE.
And I note from the top of the page that it mentioned things like hospital, I mean, CIP projects. Mr. Rios, if memory serves me right, when we were discussing the GMHA bond, there was a memo sent out by your deputy, Ms. Tyrone, which caused quite a furor on the floor because it wasn't, it didn't support the efforts that were being made on the legislative floor to give the hospital the $12 million. And I thought there was a statement in her, in her letter to us that said that there was concern from GITA that utilizing bond money or borrowing for operational costs would jeopardize our credit rating and have, or have a negative... I realize I'm old, but is my memory correct on that?
You know, I do recall seeing that as one of the items. I would need to go back to that letter and determine, I mean, take a look at it and see.
And this 2007 bond, bond, it's not a, it's not a loan, it's a bond. Are there any covenants that would preclude us using it for operational costs?
To my knowledge, there's none.
Are there, is there any possibility that this would negatively impact Gov. Guam's credit rating because we're utilizing for operational funds?
Definitely not.
Okay, you're under oath. I just wanted to make sure that we had that on the record, that it wouldn't.
I think if we used it for that purpose right now without the bill becoming law and used it for the, to pay the overtime, then there would be a problem.
And how would that be different, whether or not you used it for operational costs as opposed to us getting the legislature to do it? So now you can point, now you can point to the legislature and say it was the legislature that forced us to use bond money for operational costs, we're not to be blamed for this misuse of bond money.
Sir, if I may?
Please.
The whole rationale for the allocation of bond use, bond proceeds use, is based upon a conscious effort by the legislature to take into account prioritization of needs. So there is a requirement that if there are some deviations from what we told bondholders we were going to use the money for, in this case, it's excess, probably due to maybe things like interest accruing on those. It's been seven years, you know, it was a significant amount of money. But we, just from a practical purpose, we would need legislative authorization to tap, to use the money.
And, and I just want, again, to make sure that it's not going to negatively impact us unlike the, the statement that was made in that letter that was sent to us.
That, that reference, if I recall, was, was due to the governor at the time using his line of credit to make payroll at DOE. That sent the shockwave through standard and pores that resulted in a downgrade. So it was like April, and there wasn't any funding available to meet payroll, so the governor exercised his line of credit. That's a different story.
Yeah, but what I'm, what I was referring to was just last month when we were discussing the GMHA loan. We received, all of us were sent a letter from Telo. There was a letter that was written by Ms. Tyrone, which she later, I guess, disavowed or something. But I thought in that letter, it admonished or advised the legislature to make sure that you didn't use, that you didn't borrow for operational cost because of its negative impact on, on our bond ratings. At least that was my recollection.
Vice Speaker, I think Senator Yamashita has a follow-up question on that. Do you have one, Senator Yam?
I'm finding the letter and I'll read it into the record.
Senator Yamashita, do you have a follow-up to that? You're recognized.
It's not an actual follow-up, but it's perhaps in the same line? Is that okay? All right. So this vice speaker focused on Guam Public School System and Guam Mura Hospital. Len, can you help me understand? I really am trying to read these numbers, and I just need a little bit of help. DISIT and Department of Mental Health substance abuse, did they spend all their money?
DISIT from the spreadsheet appears to have spent all its money. Mental Health, looks like it has $36,000 left. And then UOG has $44,305.
Would the, and if they are balances, could it be because there was interest accrued and they don't know that money is there?
Possibly.
Okay.
Again, it's, if, if I remember correctly, both DISIT and Mental Health were provided money to comply with the permanent injunction. And there's been some other funding sources made available to them through the years ago, and this is seven years ago, so...
Thank you.
Vice Speaker.
I, I just pulled up the letter, and it reads as follows. "The last time the government of Guam borrowed money for operational needs, we were summarily downgraded by standard and pores. For this reason alone, GITA is opposed to funding any operations from borrowed funds, particularly in light of the fact that the operational needs of the government of Guam were just addressed by the passage of the FY 2015 Budget Act."
Sir, we're not borrowing money. We're reallocating existing resources. I think there's a distinct difference.
And this was manna from heaven? It wasn't something that we're paying back?
We are paying it back, but we're not, we're not...
So is it borrowed, or was it a gift from your father or some, from God?
It's residual funds left from the 2007 bond issue.
And how much are we paying on that 2007 bond?
I don't have that number in front of me.
But it is an amount that is borrowed, whether it's by bond or at a bank. We are paying money back for this, whatever the sum was that we borrowed in 2007. Is that correct?
That's correct. And the whole rationale for going out on a general obligation bond was to be able to take care of encumbrances and payables like COLA and income tax refunds. And it's not out of the ordinary at all. As a matter of fact, it's probably more standard practice to be able to borrow for CIPs. And there's quite a number of CIPs that were on this list in addition to COLA tax refunds.
Yeah, I, I understand. I'm just trying to make sure that we're not accused of doing anything that undermines your good credit rating. As long as we know we have 1.4 there, I guess we'll, whoever wants, I, thank you, Madam Chair.
Now, I, don't, don't get me wrong, the 1.4 is still available to DOE. It's not extraneous. So the, the report that you have here shows 2.6 in August. The bank statement shows that they withdrew 1.1 against this. So this 2.6 million dollar number is not out of 1.4. It's not something that we're talking about being extra and available. So if I haven't made myself clear on that point, I'd like to, because it's not, it's, what we're saying is that if you take a look at the bank balance of 3.5, 3.255 million, there's also a sheet, I don't know if it came through on your copy, this little adding machine tape? Was it part of what you... So you've got the 3.255 minus the 1.4 plus, we added in the remaining unencumbered funds. As you know, the hospital already withdrew its 77, so we didn't take that into account. But we took into account UOG, DISIT, and the $18,000 at DRT. And that's, that's where the number that I stated in the beginning comes from, this 1.7 million dollar number. This is what we're saying is available for this appropriation for the law enforcement overtime.
But 1.4, though, is still DOE?
Yes.
Out of that 1.7?
No, 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 no. If you take a look at what we did, you see it says 3.255, then it says minus 1.553. That includes the 1.433 to DOE. That's basically, we're taking into account what's already been encumbered. And we're saying that the bank balance of 3.2 minus what is encumbered allows for 1.721 million dollars to be applied towards the law enforcement compensation. Nope. We made sure that we weren't going to, to touch any of the existing allocations for the use of the bond proceeds up at the top here. So we're not touching anybody's funding. We just found that there's funding that is excess, and that is part of the appropriation. It probably is, you know, again, it's what the bank, you see all the different trades. You see that the money's invested at Fidelity. So the bond proceeds do generate money that is higher in return than if it was sitting in a checking account.
Vice Speaker, you still have the floor. You're done. Anyone else wishing to speak? Senator San Nicholas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to first start off by saying, Madam Chair, that I'm fully committed to paying this overtime obligation. What I'm just looking for is the right funding source for us to be doing this. And so I just wanted to ask a couple of questions to make sure that the funding sources are vetted, so that we're getting the right funding source to make these, these payments. So just to clarify what was discussed previously, this, the amount that's available is $1,721,477.22 remaining in this 2007 Series A. So I'm going to assume that for the remainder of the $4 million appropriation, we just lessed four, we just lessed the 1.7 million from that, and that's how much we have is the unexpendated fund balance in the tourist attraction fund? I guess I'll ask Benita or Les, whoever can ask.
That's correct, sir.
Okay. And let me just, let me just do some quick math here. So we've got 4 million minus $1,721,477.22. So we have a 2 million, we have $2,278,522.78 as the unexpendated fund balance in the tourist attraction fund.
Can, can you, Senator, what was your beginning balance again?
Yes, ma'am, it was $4 million, the amount of the appropriation.
Yes.
And then I lessed out the 1.7 million, which is the amount of the 2007 bond.
Mm-hmm.
And because the remainder is 2.2 million, I'm assuming it's...
Yes.
That's the, that's the remaining balance in the TAF? The unexpendated fund balance of the tourist attraction fund?
Yes.
Is that 100% of the unexpendated fund balance?
Uh, no.
What's the, what's the full unexpendated fund balance of the TAF?
For the TAF, well, you know, we're, projected balance is, is, I think, around 5 million. But that is not, that's projected balance as of September 30th, 2014. That's, that's not, that's not audited.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Okay, I think he had the... Go ahead. Go ahead. He, he says it's all right for you to...
Mr. Chair, if I may, just based on that, when we, when I had the opportunity to look at the tracking, I do know that there are, there is availability of funding, but just based on the calculations that my good colleague brought up...
Yes.
We were tracking at 1 million over and above, based on the actual tracking that's been coming in. And you, so can I have a delineation of how you come out to the 5 million?
No, no, this is, this is the, the financials for the tourist attraction, I mean, the expected fund balance, but that's projected, it could be between 4 and 5. We're not, it's, it's not done yet. The audit is, you know, we haven't really closed the year yet. I mean, we're, we're still posting adjustments, so we...
So does that include all the, all the amounts that were done and the additional funding that was provided from the TAF for all the programs that were already worked into 30...
For 2015?
For 32, 181?
Thirty?
For this last budget bill that just passed?
For the 2015.
For the, for the remainder of the 2014 bonds?
Yeah, that's my understanding. The projected fund balance of the tourist attraction fund, right?
Right.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a few other questions. This is with respect to the handout that you circulated with all of the different bonds that we have outstanding. My first question is, you know, for this 2007 bond, what's the interest rate that we're paying on that currently for the 2007 bond?
I don't have that information with me today, Senator.
Would it be more than 5%? I would assume, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So if I use 5%, it'll be a safe, low, really low estimate for... Yeah. So if I use 5%, it'll be a safe, low, really low estimate for that?
Yes.
Now, in 2007, we borrowed that much money. And then we didn't fully, even up to today, seven years later, we still haven't fully expended the balance in that. This 1.7 million, is that all accrued interest from the proceeds, kind of just like taking time to get disbursed?
I would imagine that that's how that occurred, given the passage of time and the fact that the funds are invested. I couldn't tell you for sure. We just take the bank balances and we apply the balances accordingly against appropriations. And lo and behold, there was extra money.
Now, there's basically a regulation on the books that says that if we borrow money at a certain interest rate, we cannot reinvest that money and get an interest rate higher than the interest rate that we're paying on it in order for it to stay triple tax exempt, right?
That's correct, sir. It's called arbitrage.
Arbitrage, yeah, that's the word. And so arbitrage, we basically have an interest expense. And so if we're paying interest, unless it's 5%, that means that if we put the money into an account, it cannot earn more than 5%. It has to be less than that.
That's correct.
So even if this is like accrued interest, technically over the years, because of arbitrage, the interest expense that the government of Guam has been paying on these funds would have been higher than the interest accrued on the account.
Correct.
So we really suffered a loss. This is the remainder of an actual loss that was suffered from the funds, not from the interest expense of those funds?
Actually, that's maybe not the most appropriate way to look at it because as you guys all remember, you pay interest and principal. It's a set amount. And that interest is factored into the fiscal year debt service payment. So you have cash sitting in this account. That's the money that's probably where the interest came from as opposed to, because we have a requirement to pay bondholders a set amount of interest based upon the purchase of their bonds.
Yeah. Now, I'm looking at this, did you get a copy of this handout that was provided by the Vice Speaker? All these balances here? Or was that just circulated to the senators? Yeah. Do you guys have a copy of, okay?
Is this one?
Now, I'm just looking at all these ending bank balances, right? And so just as an example, for this 2007 Series A bond fund that we have here on the last page, we have the 4,447,000 that's a remaining bank balance. Now, you mentioned that some of that's already just recently been encumbered, but that was the remaining bank balance prior to encumbrance. And so I'm just extrapolating here, but if we have a bank balance of $4 million from a bond that we floated in 2007, and that's resulted in 1.7 million dollars in excess interest, kind of just sitting there that we can use because every other obligation's already been met as per the bond covenant, I'm really curious now about all of these other bonds. Like, for example, we have this 2009 bond fund. If you go to the second to the last page, it's up there at the top, we have a 2009 bond fund that has an ending balance of 10 million. And so from 2009 to present, that's been six years. So how much unexpendited interest do we have there? And we have others in 2011. We have 23 million down in a 2009 construction account. I mean, we have so many balances here for bonds that were floated years ago. And I'm wondering now exactly how much, if we have 1.7 million out of four, if we had 4 million sitting in account for seven years, and that turned over 1.7 million dollars that we can now appropriate for whatever we need, I'm curious now, what about all these other balances? How much money do we have here? How much money are we looking at?
If you're referring to the last page of the handout from the speaker, if we could just focus on that one, you note that the, it says proceeds fund. So basically, that's the amount that is available for expenditure. And then underneath, it says a bond fund. Those are deposits for a payment. Similarly, the 2009 bond reserve fund, that $17 million. Again, those are funds that are accumulating over time in order to be able to make a principal and interest payment. Because I think the 2009 bond, we pay close to $18 million a year in debt service. So this is funds that are accumulating, not funds that are available for expenditure or appropriation. Same thing, if you go down, you see the Section 30 Debt Service Fund at 549,000. And then going down further, the hot bond, 2011, these are funds that are accumulating through monthly deposits in anticipation of making a payment. They're not available for appropriation.
No, I understand. But of this 4.4 million over here on the 2007 one, for example, you guys just testified that we now have, of that 4.4 million, 1,721,000 that is available.
That's correct.
Yeah. So I'm just curious now, I mean, of all these balances here, how many occurrences do we have where we have this same kind of money that could potentially be appropriated for other needs?
I'm going down this list with you, Senator. Ending balance column. The only one that appears that is a proceeds account appears to be the 2007, the third one down. Everything else is a rebate fund, a bond fund, a debt service fund, capitalized interest. Basically, those are all funds that are accumulating in anticipation of making a payment. So if you look halfway down, you see 2007 GOV Series A bond funds. It looks like it's funds that are held at US Bank, not Bank of Guam, so there's no balance there. So again, all the way down to the end, you don't see anything that says proceeds fund. So everything else is a fund that is set up that we must remit payments to, in conjunction with indenture, with the trustee and the co-trustee, US Bank and Bank of Guam, to be able to make good on our obligation. So I don't see anything on this page here that lends itself to being similar to the 2007 GOBonds.
Okay, so the only other one then will be the, if it says proceeds fund, then that means that there may be potential accrued interest in there that we can appropriate? If it's a proceeds, if it says Series Proceeds Fund?
Yeah, I could say that, yeah.
Okay. Because the only other one I see here, too, is on the second to the last page, there's a 2009 Section 30 Series Proceeds Fund that has 1.9 million?
Section 30 is controlled by that guy that the district court approved as the receiver, so we can't touch that.
So this one here, the Section 30, 2009 Series Proceeds Fund, that one is a restricted fund?
Only because that was, the Section 30 bonds were borrowed to build LaZon and close RDOT, and we have no control over the expenditure of that money.
Okay. How about to retire the debt service for the LaZon to the property owners? Because I know we're issuing tax credits to compensate that, but what about the interest in there? Could that be used to kind of pay that down, too, or?
I think that's a district court matter, sir. You have a situation, again, where once the receiver was put into place, we borrowed money. Now, apparently, it's not enough.
Okay. So that money cannot be accessed, then? So the only, we don't have any other bonds out there where we have this balance that is going to appear in the future?
None that I am aware of right now.
Okay. I just, because when we have money like kind of show up, it's like, wow, it would have been nice to know that we had that available. But it's good to know that we have it for paying this thing down. The only question now becomes, this 1.7 million, that is over and above what we borrowed? Basically, what I'm trying to get at is, are we paying interest? Does this 1.7 million that you're saying is available, does it have an interest expense?
Not on top of what we're already paying.
Okay. So for what we've already borrowed, that has its interest expense, but this is kind of almost like interest-free excess balance that's available?
That's a very appropriate way of putting it.
Okay. Okay. So I guess the only question now is, do we want to tap, for me at least, I guess other people might have questions. But for me, the only question becomes, do we want to tap 2.2 million from the tourist attraction fund for this obligation, or should we identify a different funding source for this obligation? Because I understand that the tourist attraction fund has this reserve balance, almost like a rainy day fund in the event that tourism were just kind of nosedive. They'll be able, and the hotel occupancy taxes coming in would have dropped dramatically, they'd be able to tap this reserve fund to be able to continue the marketing efforts that they make to keep the tourism engine turning. And so I understand that, when I met with GBB, they shared with me that the reason why they don't want to tap that reserve fund is because that's almost like their stopgap in case hotel occupancy taxes drop dramatically and they need money to go out and market the island. So I guess, Mr. Chairman, for me, again, I fully support this effort to make this overtime payment. The question now becomes, what would be the most appropriate source of funds for this? As far as I'm concerned, based on the testimony from GIDEA, this 1.7 million, because it's not going to be taking any money away from what was originally allocated for the borrowing, and because technically, it isn't going to be incurring any interest expenses because it's over and above what we've actually committed to in terms of the borrowing, I can actually be a little comfortable using this 1.7 million. Also, I can feel comfortable knowing that there isn't any other hidden balances in any of these funds that are, any of these bond accounts that are accruing that we can possibly kind of marshal together. I guess this is the only one. So this looks like it might be a pretty reasonable funding source. My only concern now would be the tourist attraction fund reserve. And maybe we may have an alternative funding source besides that that we can talk about. But I'll go ahead and turn it over now to the other members.
Chairman of Tourism has questions on the tourist attraction fund.
Yes, Mr. Chair, if I may, just based on the answer that the Director of DOE gave, and just to make verification, based on the actual collections that was received for 2014, I just want to note from the record, based on the information received, that the total actual collections for 2014 was at 34,329.96. The TAF appropriation for 2014 was at 28,500. But in public law, 32-181, there was an additional appropriation to Festback and all the Chirmore Preservation Program funding sources that were given to those programs, which totaled about 2.4 million. So it's not the 5 million available. Just for the record, it's that minus the additional funding that was taken out on the 2014 funds. And I just want to make sure that the Department of Administration's administrator knows that. Because the question that I asked was based on the funding, based on the additional resources that were given, that were taken from the tourist attraction fund for the 2015 budget, from the 2014 lapse funds, was that still a balance of 5 million? And you said yes.
Yeah, that's taking into consideration the 2015 appropriation.
No, but the funding, the resources that were utilized for those programs, for the different programs, and for the Festival of the Arts for 2016, was it 2.4 million from the lapses of the 2014 funds?
Yes, that's correct.
And so for the actual collections, you said that there was still 5 to 6 million dollars available?
I said 4 to 5. That's after taking, I mean, reducing the.
And I'm just saying that if you take the total balance, sir, based on what was appropriated from the 2014 balance, it's not 5 million dollars.
The 4 to 5 million is after taking, removing the appropriations for 2015. That is the information that was provided to me.
You take the 5.8 million, 5.829 million dollars, and you take the additional appropriation and minus 2.4 from public law 32-181, and you leave 3.4 million available.
Where did you get the 5.8?
That's based on the information that was provided to us from the actual collections to fiscal year 2014 for TAF.
That's actual collection, but you're forgetting that there is the fund balance from 2013?
That was.
So when you take the fund balance from 2013, and I'm talking about fund balance, this is unappropriate fund balance. So when you take into consideration the balance from 2013 and the collection from 2014, plus the appropriation for 2014, plus the 2015 earmark from the 14 fund balance, then you have about 4 to 5 million balance.
Well, Mr. Chair, that presents a different scenario because she's taking the rollover for 2013 available funds. And that was the question I asked.
I'm talking about the fund balance as the audit of 2013.
Any other questions on the funding source? And then we'll get to the directors as to how much money they actually need. Madam Speaker, did you have any questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I know that earlier you had asked a question of GIDEA, and I went to get the actual letter on September 30th, 2014 by Ms. Tyron. And she basically said, and I'd just like to quote her, "That the last time the government of Guam borrowed money for operational needs, we were summarily downgraded by standard and pores. For these reasons alone, GIDEA is opposed to funding any operations from borrowed funds, particularly in light of the fact that the operational needs of the government of Guam were just addressed via the passage of FY 2015 Budget Act." So that just explains, of course, you know, the question that you had asked earlier, whether bond monies can be used for operations. The question I have, though, at the time when we were discussing the budget and in terms of revenues that are being generated by the government, and this is for GIDEA, looking, of course, at your breakdown of interest paid for every one of these bond series. And then you also indicated that if it says proceeds, then those are the amounts that are available. My question is, why is it that during the budget discussion, that these amounts were never brought to the attention of the legislature in which then they could have been a part of the budget, the 2015 budget? How soon did you know of these amounts, that they were not made available? How often do you put these accounts together? Do you do this on a monthly basis, or a quarterly basis, or a weekly basis? When do these trustee bank accounts make known to DOE and GIDEA what amounts are available to be paid or available? Any one of you guys out there who can attempt to answer the question?
Yes, Speaker, just with regards to the formulation of the budget, the funds that are used in forming the budget are, of course, the general fund. Then there's also federal sources, as well as special funds. During the SES meetings, I don't think there's been any discussion on additional revenues or additional balances on accounts that are subject to maybe deappropriation and then reappropriation.
And why not? Because those monies should be made available for the legislature to appropriate.
Yeah, I'm just saying that it's not discussed. And I know the Chairman of the appropriation.
It's unfortunate, though, because I really detest any type of action being taken or inaction of, you know, any department or agency who may have access to this amount, or any dollar amount for that matter, in any account. Because you know that the role of the legislature's primary function is to appropriate. And to withhold information like this is unconscionable.
Yeah, I don't think the information was withheld during the SES meeting.
Well, apparently.
GIDEA, I'm sure that the question to GIDEA was not posed on having them research and look at the outstanding balances on these bonds.
Well, this is not, you know, the first time that this has been done, where there are trust accounts that had money sitting, yes, cash, in the banks, never, you know, known to the legislature at all, until such time that somehow the administration finds it convenient to be able then to disclose those dollar amounts in a form then of a bill. bill, you know, for, for this legislature to appropriate. And, you know, and I know that the, the Vice Speaker, now as the Acting OFB Chair, has always been asking for monies that are out there to be made available, to be able to address the needs of this government. And it's very, very difficult for this legislature to act, you know, when, when you're just not disclosing these dollar amounts at all, and it starts to shortchange, of course, our government. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Any other Senator? All right, oh, Senator McCready.
No, I was going to call over.
Okay. The way I was hoping to conduct this was I was going to try to get the government to address the 2,000 bonds. We've also addressed, I mean, 2,007 bonds. We've also addressed TAF, and we don't have anybody from GBB here, so I think we've taken care of the Section 1 as to where the money's going to come from. I'd like, at this point, to excuse this panel and invite in the three, the two chiefs and the Director of Corrections to attest to their needs. I don't know if you want all three of them in at one time, or if you want them one by one. We'll take a short recess and make that decision. Is back in session? Oh. Please. Oh, sorry. You affirm, you affirm that the question we've asked, that you're, you're, I do. Thank you very much. In the proposed budget bill that was sent down by the governor, there's 1.5 million dollars to GFD, and I thought I'd start with GFD because I was surprised, I thought that their compensation package includes it. So why don't I just have the chief explain what this 1.5 is, and the fact that it's not technically overtime, but it's paying for something?
Right, well, basically, I've been working, as, as every chief or director should, with our BBMR and our fiscal team to address projector shortfalls. That said, all our firefighters are paid to date in what you guys commonly refer to as overtime, or what the people commonly, commonly understand as overtime. However, you know, and it's really, it's, it's based on Chapter 4, I'm sorry, 4GCA, Chapter 6, subsection 6219, which is the fireman compensation, which is different from all other law enforcement agencies, that every firefighter is to be paid at 106 hours and time and a half for every hour after that. So technically, it's not called overtime, however, the system doesn't allow for salary to be paid at time and a half, so it automatically lumps it into overtime. So that said, as we, we pay on throughout the, the budget or throughout the year, the fiscal year, it's automatically paid because it is their salary. So that, that kind of makes us use against the appropriation and allows us to go into the red, which causes a shortfall into our budget. So this 1.5 million is to pay back what we've, what we've expended. I hope I didn't lose anybody on that one.
How much you project the, the excess is going to be, or?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at my, well, my viewer, as far as AS400, and I see 1.9. So this 1.5 goes to addressing that, and, and again, I continue to work with, with the team to address the rest.
So Chief, you need, you need 1.9?
Yes.
But your, but the bill only has 1.5.
Correct, and you know, as we continue to work, you know, today, they found the 1.5, you know, tomorrow, like Senator Wampad said, you know, maybe they'll, they'll have later on and they'll see.
Well, I mean, the, the reason why that's so important is because we've just determined that as per Department of Administration, I'm sorry, I got notes everywhere here, as per the Department of Administration, the, the fund, unexpendanted fund balance of GBB is 4 to 5 million, but we're only tapping 2.2. So I'm just curious why we're only giving 1.5 now to, to the Fire Department, when they actually need 1.9 million?
Well, again, my, my, my lane is the Guam Fire Department, and maybe there's a bigger picture here that I'm not aware of, but I continue to work with them, and the commitment is that they will make sure that the Guam Fire Department is taken care of.
So in your lane, you need 1.9 million dollars?
That's what I see in, in AS400, yes.
Okay, and, and again, just to clarify what you stated earlier, so this 1.9 million was over expended in 2014?
Uh, yes.
On, on, on pay compensation? It's, it was?
On compensation, correct.
So basically, Fire Department personnel accrued hours that they weren't compensated for?
No, they accrued the hours that they are, they've accrued the hours and have compensated those hours.
But how did, how does, how do you pay for, how do you pay for an amount more than what you have available?
Uh, we, so somehow I knew you would probably ask me that question, but if, and you know, I've gone over this for, for quite a few years, and we've been doing it at least since even before I was a Fire Chief. But basically, it's covered under 4GCH, Chapter 14, Subsection 14110. It's basically being able to certify for the amounts and purposes stated appropriations. So we certify based on the appropriation that we see in, in the system, and then it's paid out through DOA. So, you know, the way it works is that it, I guess it, it takes us into the red at the end of the year, and then we, you know, as the dust settles and they come up with the final amount, then it's appropriated back to the general fund, one way or another.
I'm, I've always been under the assumption that you can only certify if funds are available.
Right. Like, see, the amounts of purposes stated by appropriation, so we go by what I see, if it's, if it's in the system for that pay period, then I'm going to certify the funds.
Yeah, how do you end up certifying, over certifying and being 1.9 million short? Because I'm assuming, and the reason why this discussion is so important, is because this is going to be an obligation that isn't a one-time shot. You know, we're finding these monies that are kind of lying around, but it's very obvious that these are going to be recurring expenses. And so I'm trying to figure out not only how we're going to pay for them on a recurring basis, but how we're accruing for them and not, and it's not getting factored into the budget, because they, they should have been in the budget.
Well, you know, you know, overtime is not, it's very, very difficult to try to plan overtime, all right? The, the normal, the normal definition of overtime is irregular. You know, unfortunately, like with the Guam Fire Department, overtime is built into our compensation schedule. However, we do have overtime that is irregular, just like all the other law enforcement agencies, based on, you know, covering shortfalls due to deployments, due to long-term sick leave or profiles, and so on and so forth. So, you know, I think what you're, it's, it's nearly impossible to truly plan your, your 100% budget that's going to be foolproof. I think, especially now, this year, just for Guam Fire Department's sake, we've experienced over 12 retirees this year that, you know, we projected six, and we ended up getting 12. Just this past weekend, I got one guy that just announced he was retiring out of nowhere after, you know, I thought he was going to work at least another two more years. So these are the kind of things, for every one person that retires, that's five audio cancels, meaning 24 hours of overtime I got to pay. That's not in the budget or planned for. So, you know, of course, these are those, those, you know, small percentage that we have to.
Definitely not something that you can, you can plan for the future on, but, I mean, to, to an exact amount.
Right, but we, I think we do a pretty good job of, of getting within, you know, a small percentage of our overall budget.
Okay.
Enough to where it's fixable.
But the amount of 1.9, you know, I'm, I'm very, the idea that these guys have been waiting for this money, you know, and it's 2 million bucks.
Well, you know, in the grand scheme of things, I, I think it's actually minute, you know, it cost me over 2 million dollars to run a fire station. So it's easy, it's easy to, you know, looking at that 1.9 relative is actually pretty small in my, again, in my humble opinion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm just, I, I, do we, do we still have the Director of, of Department of Administration here? Because this is the, the second.
Unfortunately, she left, I just sent her a text to come back.
Because I remember in a previous, in a previous committee, the whole that we had a discussion on, it was determined that there were, there was also off-balance sheet accounting being done by the Guam Fire Department who respected the accrual of the overtime for their police officers. And so I'm just trying to figure out how are we reconciling what the Fire Department and the Police Department are, are certifying and going into the, into the red on with the Department of Administration supposedly having to release those funds and, and accept those certifications? I'm trying to figure out why it's not, it's not balancing. So if we can get that, get that answered from the, the Director of the Department of Administration, why 1.9 million was, well, according to the Fire Chief, it was certified as available, but, but the reason why we're here today is because it wasn't actually available. So we just need to clarify, I, I just need to clarify that. And it would be good also, I guess, to have, I guess, have her present with the, the Chief of Police also, who's made similar statements to this kind of, to this in the past, to get a firm handle on it. Because in the end, you know, the, the payment of overtime, I mean, and, and I'll read it into the record later, but there's been some pretty good editorials about how the payment of overtime is, is, is an obligation that really shouldn't be, be left to wait. And for us to, I'm, I'm glad that we're trying to figure out funding sources for these things, but with us having recently passed a budget, it should have been included in the, in the original budget projections that we did. I mean, it, it hasn't even been three weeks, or it's just been three weeks since we passed that budget. So I think we need to kind of get to the bottom of this to make sure that going forward, we're not, we're not wondering where that money's going to come from anymore. So I would like to make a request for the, for the Director of Department of Administration.
I've asked her, I've sent a text for her to come back, and they're trying to call it. But anybody, Senator McCready, you had a question of Chief Nicholas, anybody else on the Fire Department?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, welcome, Chief, and, and your firefighters who do a fantastic job of protecting our island and watching over our people. You know, you spoke a little bit about the reason why the overtime is so high is because of attrition and deployment. What, what is the total number of, of firefighters currently right now that is, that is getting overtime?
Uh, we are at 256 uniform firefighters, I believe it's 26 emergency medical dispatchers, as well as three mechanics who also recruit, accrue overtime.
And would you say that when you made your projections of 1.9, as opposed to the 1.5 million that was, that was language in this current bill, were those projections, did you throw in the attrition rate and did you throw in the deployment rate? So was, was, what I'm trying to say is, was, was overtime a bit higher because the men and women of, of the Fire Department were, some of them were deployed?
Uh, correct, yes.
And that was in 2000?
Fiscal year 14, correct. And coming into this 2015, I was just informed by General Polino that another 10 of my guys might be deployed with the air guard.
And so you, you, so, okay, we're talking about 10, 10 officers deployed and another 12, you said, retired. So we've got 22 officers total that you're now short.
Yeah.
And you had a battalion of 30 that just graduated?
A cycle of 30, yes.
Cycle of 30?
Now, you're, you're not also counting the personnel I have on long-term profile who are actually working towards medical disability that I've had to take out of the field, so these guys are also had to be made up for.
And would you say that, and how many, what, what numbers is that?
I believe I'm at eight or, eight to 10.
Eight to 10, so another 10. So basically, basically, you're still two officers short because you're losing 32 and you get 30.
Basically, I look at that last cycle as a net zero gain, really.
Okay, so it's pretty much, it's pretty much par for the course. You need, you need about five more cycles of police, of fire.
At least, but I'll definitely take one at a time.
One at a time, absolutely.
As money allows.
That, that makes my next question of, of the 1.9 million that you're projecting, and the 1.5 million that is being appropriated to basically refund the general fund, correct?
Basically, yes.
It's not, would you say that it's, it's not, we're not underfunding the Fire Department by the 1.5? I mean, would you say that, that your projection of 1.9 million, is the 1.5 underfunding you guys, or is it something that you can live with?
No, it's, you know, we, we do our best to work underneath the, the budget that's provided to us. And, you know, of course, these unforeseen circumstances might, might require us to go over the, the budget.
Yes.
But we do do our best to, to work within what we're given. And I think both the legislature, as well as the administration, does a pretty good job in giving us what we need.
Okay, and so, so as the chief, you, you are comfortable with the numbers that you have been given, although it's 1.9 that you, you're projecting, you're comfortable with the 1.5 million?
Uh, yes, with the commitment that we will continue to work towards, you know, addressing any shortages.
And, but, but then, your follow-up answer was that you've been getting a lot of support from the fiscal team and the legislature to make sure that you guys never fall short?
Absolutely.
So you, you have the safety net of, you're getting 1.5 million and we're saying that if, if, if in the future you need more, we'll be here to take care of that as well.
Yeah, I, and I hope I speak for all of us here, I think we're all part of the same team here. So, um, we continue to work like this collaboratively, we can definitely address these issues.
And that's one thing that, that I commend about you as, as the leader of the fire department is, you understand there's different branches of law enforcement and you know that the pie has to be split more than one way.
Understood.
And when meeting with you earlier, uh, you, you've expressed that to me.
Yes.
And, and I, that's something to be commended, because you understand that the fire department, the police department, Department of Corrections and every other law enforcement need to work together to, to try and achieve this one goal, which is to protect people, save lives and, and first responders, it's, it's public safety is number one.
Absolutely.
So I thank you for that and I, and I totally support you and your, your, um, department.
Thank you, Senator.
Senator Nicholas had your, your hand up, but Senator Morrison hasn't asked a question yet, so let me have him go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chief, I just want to know if your overtime assets are attached to fees? I'm, I'm sure you perform a lot of other services out there than the normal emergency, uh, operations, but there are services that you provide to the public, are they, with your overtime assets, are there fees attached to these overtime?
The only overtime that is covered in fees is the 911, my emergency medical dispatchers. Um, but the overtime of firefighters is paid through the general fund appropriation. Uh, my special fund, the flame fund, is for training and operations, uh, training and equipment. So, uh, that's the only other fees that, or the only special fund I have that is funded by fees or using collected revenue. So what, what has happened in the past, which is what I was trying to avoid a long time ago, was the supplanting of, you know, funds. So my general fund was decreased based on the amount of collections I was had, making in my flame fund, which is what I was trying to avoid, but it, it just seems to happen that way, which is-
I, I would like to maybe work with you in the future and see if, you know, looking at, um, some of these services that you, uh, that the department performs and how these fees are attached to the overtime assets, so that way it's not, you know, there's an offset.
I, I do appreciate that and, and I will be knocking on doors for, because we do need to update our antiquated fees and fine schedule, absolutely.
Back, Senator Nicholas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of things to clarify. Um, it was mentioned in your, in your line of questioning that, um, you, you want to, you, you need the 1.9 to reimburse the general fund? Or did, did, did the, did the fire department personnel that are owed overtime for 2014, did they already receive their compensation?
Correct, yes.
So they're not, so if they're here, they're not here because they're waiting for a paycheck, they already got all their compensation?
Yes, they're here because they, they support the intent of what we're trying to do as a, as a department to make sure that they continue to be paid on time.
I'm just, Mr. Chairman, perhaps you can provide me with some clarification though? Because if we appropriate this 1.9 million or 1.5 million, but there is no prior year obligation, where is that 1.5 million actually getting, going to be spent on if it's not to pay the overtime because it's already been paid?
My understanding is, is we, we are showing a shortfall, uh, of expended revenue or expended, uh, funds and so it needs to be paid back with the 1.5.
No, but, um, yeah, that's, and this is where it gets kind of interesting, you guys, but you guys already got your, you guys got your overtime checks.
Correct.
So, Mr. Chairman, it just looks to me like this 1.5 million is, is an attempt to appropriate, uh, from, from the tourist attraction fund and from this, um, remaining balance in this bond, just to the general fund. But if it's going to be appropriated to the general fund for 2014 and that, that book has already been closed for, for the fiscal year, then what is that money, what is that money going to be used for?
I, I think we can probably in the morning or get the Director of Administration back, she's not answering her phone.
But just for the record, just to make it very clear, the fire department isn't, isn't pending overtime payments, you guys got everything already?
Uh, with the exception of, uh, with the exception of Typhoon Francisco, which we're working on.
Um, how, how much is that?
That, that's through, uh, with Homeland Security, uh, 60,000.
Six-
Sixty, six zero, 60,000.
60,000?
Roughly.
So that, that, that still remains to be paid?
Correct, and it's being addressed.
So that doesn't require an appropriation?
Um, it's being paid for through, uh, Homeland Security and FEMA because it was, uh, yeah, so it has to go through.
So then, everything else, you guys are good to go on your overtime, you guys aren't waiting for another-
Well, we are paid to date, yes. As far as the accounting piece to it, I'm not an accountant and I leave that to the fiscal team and the, but I, I just work with the, the numbers I have and it's, it's to be addressed, so they address it.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, I just really need clarification because-
Okay, we'll get the director back to answer that question.
Okay.
No, 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 for him first, let's-
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and, you know, I'm, I'm glad you asked that, my question, because I was going to say, because earlier you had said that, that they were, they made, uh, your men and women whole by having to pay this. That means it's a transfer from, uh, the governor's, so, because he has a 15% transfer authority, uh, for, you know, over $500 million, so that was done and that's good. My question to you then, so that we don't maybe run into this kind of problem anymore, because, because you're, you're saying it's not really labeled as overtime, so that there'll be a separate object category for overtime. And I know that former Speaker Ben used to do this in the budget for all overtime. He would just put, like, let's say a million dollars in there that the entire government would draw down for overtime. In this case, and maybe to your advantage then, because normally we don't want to shortchange any of the employees by having to pay them their salary, so this overtime is part of their salary and it's listed as their salary. Because normally then in the, um, different object categories of the budget, we sometimes do not allow for any, uh, personnel funds to be transferred into other operations, but you, I mean, I'm sorry, the reverse, uh, only to ensure that then, you know, we're not, uh, hiring more than we should or not padding our budget. And I think maybe for the next fiscal year, that when you put this, you add it all in as part of the work in which your men and women, of course, is required of them to do. And just explain during the budget hearing as to why that dollar amount is high. So it would never be looked at as overtime and that it would not be a separate object category, never again shorting, uh, your men and women.
Thank you, Senator, actually, uh, you know, Senator Pangolinan, uh, said exactly what you're saying. I, I believe the issue is the AS400, whether it can, it can set up that, because it automatically in, in object category 111 for salary, it only pays it at one time the out, one, you know, by hour. It doesn't do the time and a half under 111. So it automatically has to be thrown into the 112 category for overtime. And so that's where the, you know, unfortunately, I think it's a system issue, but you're absolutely right, that's the way it should be approached.
Any further questions of the chief?
Thank you very much, um, Mr. Chair. Um, chief, so, um, it's good that you have figured out a way to address the overtime needs of your, um, of your, uh, men and women. And in talking to them, uh, this afternoon, there, outside of overtime pay, there may be some other pay issues that are, um, outstanding, is that correct?
Uh, yes, Senator.
Can, can you just describe those for us, since we're talking about overtime and prior year?
Sure, I, I believe the, it's just the, what's left of the retro payments for the 40%. Uh, so the, the salary base has been paid. Uh, I believe it's the overtime and holidays where they factor in that 40% that had yet to be, to be paid.
Do you have an estimate for that?
Not at this time, but I can provide that for you at a later date.
Yeah, you know, that would be good, since we're talking about all of this and if there was a way to make everything whole, uh, we would look at that if we had that number, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Senator.
Any other questions of the fire chief? If not, I'll excuse him and we'll recess so that the speaker can do her presentations. Do you want to come back this afternoon or should we start in the morning? Okay, alright, then we stand in recess until she finishes and then we'll come back. Just back, um, in session, can I have the Sergeant at Arms get the oath, please? Colleagues, we have with us the, um, Director of Corrections. The governor's bill has a request for 700,000 for DOC. Who wishes to pose any questions to the director? Senator Nicholas. After Senator Nicholas, any other senator wish to be heard on? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, so, just so I can get a firm amount, because when we, when we talked to, um, the chief of the fire department, the request that came down on the bill was 1.5 million, but then he said a, a figure of 1.9. So could we get the actual figure that you need, sir?
Well, actually, if you look at the first, first spreadsheet there, Senator, to the right, uh, under available balance down to the second, second or third line to the bottom, to your right where it has 859,694.68. That is the exact figure that, uh, I am more likely will be requesting this afternoon.
So the actual amount you need is 859,694.68 cents?
Uh, that is correct, Senator.
Okay, just so that we get a firm handle on the number. My other question, sir, was, um, I'm just looking through your spreadsheet here and I, I thank you for providing this. Uh, the only real concern I had, I mean, the whole thing is a concern, because overtime is supposed to be paid regularly, but I'm seeing, um, dates here going back to 2013. So we have unpaid accrued overtime back to 2013 also? We have a 2013 balance?
No, that, that, Senator, that's incorrect. The unpaid balance of, uh, prior year overtime that I am requesting is for the month of July, August and September.
I see.
Seven, seven pay periods, that's correct.
So here where it says actual and then projection, that's your act, those are the, the amounts?
That is correct, Senator.
So everything else, that PD is, that's paid, that, that's the column for paid?
That is correct.
Okay, so everything's good to go, you're just, you're just short from July to, to September 30th?
That is correct.
What about, I mean, it looks like you're, you're, every month you're coming up short, what about for the remainder of FY 2015? What's your month-to-month going to be shortfall? Because it looks like you have a shortfall every month here since July.
Well, and, and that's a good question, um, you know what, our overtime project, uh, provided, um, for 2015 is 908,000, if I recall correctly. Uh, I will say this, that, um, we have folks that we have recruited the past couple of months. Uh, my intent and my goal is to reduce the overtime significantly. So I'm looking at the 908,000 that has been appropriated for DOC for 2015 as a reasonable appropriation at this point. And that will allow me to strive to be able to make the overtime a, a reality with regards to that appropriation. I will say this though, that again, uh, I will reiterate like, um, um, the chief from fire department, that we continue to work together collaboratively, uh, in the event that it does not become a reality, uh, that, uh, you all be able to, to assist myself, Adalup and the fiscal team, uh, to appropriate more fund, more funding, uh, for overtime if needed.
Okay, so, so you, you're confident that the 908 that you received should be good to go?
That is correct, Senator.
Okay, just that we don't have any surprises, you know, next fiscal year and we're trying to figure out where the money's going to come from. Because right now, because of the, the balances that we're looking at and talking about, since we're kind of getting almost what appears to be a green light to start tapping the fund reserve balance, the tourist attraction fund, I, I would be interested in saying, okay, well, since the door is open, let's make sure that we're taking care of everything that we might need to take care of. So, um, so right now, the, um, the amount that you need to get current is 859,694 and you're okay with the 908 for FY 2015?
That, that is correct.
Okay, I'm good, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
That's what I'm appropriated, I'll, I'll take that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Senator McCready, then Senator Morrison, then Senator-
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Director, uh, Senator Augustine, welcome and your, your staff as well.
Thank you.
And, uh, commend you guys on doing the best job you can with the lack of resources that you guys, um, are working under. Um, I guess when you talk about, and Senator Nicholas touched on this, I guess when you talk about overtime and, and, and we have right now seven pay periods, which equates to three months, what are we going to do long-term? So, I asked the same question to GFD, how many officers right now are getting this overtime?
We have a total of 197, um, uniform officers.
That's total, that's total workforce in Department of Corrections?
Uniform, that is, that is correct.
And they are all receiving overtime?
That is correct.
Everyone?
Yes. But, um, Senator, just keep in mind that just the past couple of months, we have recruited a total of 53 uniform officers. So some of those are not accumulating overtime as of yet.
Now, I, if I may recall, I'm, my, my memory is just a bit hazy. When we discussed at a previous oversight hearing with Department of Corrections, I believe it was about six months ago, Mr. Vice Speaker, you'd probably know more, we had an oversight. The sweet spot for, for, um, employees was about 53. Were we, are, we're pretty close to, to maxing out the, the new employees to right-size the Department of Corrections, is, is that correct?
We're, we're, we're close at that, to be, uh, realistic, the number that we would like to see, I would like to see is 250.
So we're still, we're still 53 short?
Around there, but, uh, what I would like to do is with the 197 that I do have on board right now, is actually, um, realistic to be able to bring the overtime down tremendously. And, and just the first month, we, we are seeing that trend going down.
So what, so, okay, so what you're saying is with the new addition of the 53, that adds on to the 197 total?
That's correct.
You're going to exponentially lower the, 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 the ceiling of the, the, the expended overtime?
That's correct.
Which, which then in 2015 fiscal year would not be 859,694.68 for July, August and September. So next year at this time, are, are, we're not going to be, we're not going to be at this number, you're saying?
I am, I am, I am working to make that a reality, that's correct. That I, we do not have to go through this painful, uh, experience again.
Okay, do you have a projection? Do you, are you, are you trending towards a certain number that, that, that you may or may not realize?
Yes, the 908,000 that I was appropriating.
Yes.
That's correct.
You're, you're trending there?
Yes, sir.
You're on track?
Yes, sir.
And with 53 more officers, minus the attrition rate?
Sure.
You're going to be at about 250, correct? If you get 53 more?
That's, that's if it's approved.
Would that eliminate overtime completely?
Absolutely.
So, okay, so that's, that's my question. If, if we can for somehow think long-term solution and get you right-sized with another 53 officers, that would eliminate overtime completely at Department of Corrections?
Tremendously, I'm going to say this, you cannot eliminate overtime completely. But with that number, a realistic number of 250, it will definitely drop. And, and, and if, uh, reality strikes me, I will, I will say, uh, very minimal overtime will be accumulated by any of the corrections officers due to the fact that, uh, now their, their, their shifts are appropriate with regards to the amount of hours uh, that they need to work per week, 40 or 43. And they should not have to accumulate overtime, therefore, because we have people coming in-
Yes.
-to relieve them in a timely fashion.
And we, we are, we are keeping track of, of those, you know, we, we are balancing it out now with the 53 new employees-
That's correct.
-and the overtime, because this is a huge, huge number-
It is.
-in, in, in my book. So, okay, I, I just wanted to make clear on that, you know, when this overtime bill came out or the, the, uh, the subject of overtime came out, Department of Corrections, uh, boy, they were, they're adamant that they wanted their overtime in their seven, I thought it was eight period pay periods, but seven pay periods. So I, I am happy that this is happening now, the $1 million out of the 859,000, you're, you're, you're getting 1 million.
Yes, sir.
Are you going to lockbox the other for overtime, the rest of the?
That, that's correct, uh, keep in mind that night differential and hazard pay also has to be considered in that.
So when you add the night differential and hazardous pay, is that all, is there any penalties involved in this overtime?
This is it.
Just the night and hazardous? And that will still suffice the $1 million appropriation?
That, that is correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Senator Morrison, Senator Uggan, and then back to Senator Nicholas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Director. I want to make this clear. Your goal is to reduce overtime, but your operational expenses are still going to remain flat, right?
That's correct.
So what is happening is you are reprogramming those monies into recruitment. You will be reprogramming those monies into recruitment?
Yes.
So we don't expect your budget to reduce?
That's correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make that clear, because I know we're talking reduction of overtime. I just don't want the public or anybody to have a misconception that we're going to see a reduction in your budget, because yes, the goal is to reduce overtime, but your budget, your operational expenses will remain flat.
The operational expenses remain, and don't be surprised that it's going to increase, because really, our population, our clients are increasing. 724, 725 is consistent as far as our clients is concerned, in comparison to 588 four years ago.
Right.
So it's climbing.
And I know, and the goal, again, is to bring much more efficiencies to the operations, regardless of reduction of overtime, and to have it easier to manage for yourself and your administrators. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Sure.
Senator Uggan?
Senator Uggan? Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Speaker, Mr. Chairman, and Mrs. Augustine, thank you for appearing before the legislature. Just for clarification purposes, so that I understand the line of questioning, right now, you have how many personnel on staff? Uniform personnel?
197.
Okay.
Uniform.
That is exclusive of, excludes the 53 that you have just recently recruited?
That's including the 53.
Okay. So previously, you were operating with 197 less 53, and you were accumulating this amount of overtime?
That's correct.
Wow. Okay. How many retirees did you realize in fiscal year 14? You recall?
I would like to say three.
Three?
Three.
And any of your troops deploying during the course of?
Three during 2014.
So the impact, at least for fiscal year 15? No, what about fiscal year 15? This fiscal year?
I anticipate probably three as well.
So the impact of individuals deploying most likely would be minimal?
Minimal. That's correct.
Do you know when your 53 new employees, are they all, or have they all completed their training?
No, we still have three in the process of recruitment. The list that was provided us, again, was insufficient, so we went back and requested an additional listing. We still have 16 plus 10 that's in the training cycle right now as we speak.
You have 26 that's still undergoing training?
That's correct.
And they should be completed by mid-next year?
Next week.
By next week?
Next week.
By next week?
That's correct.
So you will have 26 additional uniform personnel supporting the operations directly and no longer undergoing training?
That's correct.
So that should alleviate some of the overtime costs. Now, there was a question that was made in regards to the allocation of the full $1 million. Now, my question is, your requirement is 860,000?
On the data that I provided the senators, that's correct.
And then in line with the statement that you just made, 908,000 that has been allocated out of fiscal year 15 is sufficient to cover, you anticipate, obviously, it's just an anticipation, is sufficient to cover your overtime?
That is correct.
Now, the appropriation here, should the figure remain $1 million to DOC?
Yes.
Is specifically for overtime?
That's correct.
So based on our discussion right now, I'm hearing that the $140,000, up to $1 million, may not be necessary if, in fact, things are realized based on our conversation today?
That's right.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Augustine. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
Senator Nicholas, if you don't mind, Senator Speaker Womack hasn't asked any questions yet, so I'd like to ask her. Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much. I'd like to ask if you have actually taken advantage of a provision in the budget law that we put in every year to assist GPD, GFD, you know, DOC to hire temporary, you know, individuals during the time when your officers are in deployment? Have you ever taken advantage of that provision?
Senator, and I think-
So that then you know you don't have to pay a lot of retirement?
Sure, Speaker. I will say this, that we've tried reaching out to some of the retired corrections officers, and DOC is not one of those places that when you retire, you would want to come back and continue to serve pretty much. They've done their time. Even if you offer them the same salary that they'll get prior to retiring, they just don't have that appetite to return and work at DOC. However, we have taken advantage where to go out and do a limited-term application, if you may, to fill those gaps of individuals that have deployed. We have done that before. Yes, ma'am?
Do you have any numbers at all, in terms of how they've actually been able to reduce then the amount of overtime by bringing these part-time employees in?
I could answer that. It would be very difficult, because again, the agency has been short of personnel for quite some time, and like I indicated, you know, with the additional 50 that are coming onboard, and those that already have been trained and started joining the force a couple weeks ago, we're already seeing a trend of the overtime going down. But even if you bring in limited-term personnel to replace those that are deploying, you're still accumulating that overtime, because the infrastructure, the manning in the agency as a whole is still short of personnel. They're just coming in, replacing those that have deployed. So we've exercised that as much as we could when we had people deploy. We have them.
So did I hear you earlier say that you now have 53 new recruits?
We still have three more that we have to recruit of that 53.
Okay. So you have three, then eventually you're going to have the 50, but then eventually you're going to get the three?
That's correct. We're waiting for the list.
So what is the total cost, personnel cost then for these 53, do you know?
It was, if I'm not mistaken, it was $1 million total cost. 900, something like that.
Okay. So it's actually breaking even then?
Yes.
So that explains that when you get these individuals onboard, then you dramatically reduce then your overtime?
That's correct.
And your goal, of course, is to have 250?
Yes.
And with these 53, it'll take you definitely up to 250?
No.
You said you have right now 190?
Inclusive of that.
That's inclusive.
That's correct.
So you need to recruit an additional 53. Is there, are you moving towards that any time soon to recruit for more officers?
Speaker, what I want to do, like I mentioned, is I want to take a look at the effects of the 197 that I have. Once we get the additional recruits onboard that due to graduate next week, because right now, the trend that I'm seeing is that with, without them onboard yet, we're actually seeing the overtime going down tremendously. So before I start bringing more bodies onboard, I want to utilize what I have in my arsenal and manage it effectively to be able to say and justify that I need more than what I have onboard right now. I want to effectively utilize what I have.
So you're saying that all 197 of your uniform are currently accrue overtime? Do, are any of these uniform officers assist in the DOI impact agreement that, I mean, you get some assistance, DOI assistance of 700-some thousand dollars? Is anyone, any amount there being used for overtime, or is this only strictly for just regular operations? Can some of that money go into overtime?
I think if I understand the question, is there any DOI funding that is utilized to appropriate for overtime? Is that?
Yes. Yeah. Are you using any of that for overtime?
Yes, Your Honor, and I think it's reflective on the, yes, it's reflective on the document, that first document.
So that 708 then?
That's correct, Your Honor.
Is for overtime? It's not just regular DOC operation?
It's for overtime. We appropriate it for overtime.
So is that overtime then in addition to the 859,000 is being requested?
That is correct.
So it's not above that? Local monies, you're going to need 859,000, and then DOI monies, already you've received from them, 708,000.
That's correct. We've utilized that to pay the overtime for 2014. So the additional 859 that I am requesting is just to pay the remainder of the last three months of FY 2014.
So then your overtime really is more than $1 million, because you haven't factored in the 708?
That's correct, Speaker. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Senator Nicholas and Senator Uggan had another question. Anybody else? Okay.
Okay, so I'm just trying to get a firm handle on the number, because in your discussion with Senator McCready, the question was 860 for overtime, and then you mentioned hazardous and night differential. Is that 860 inclusive of hazardous, night diff, and overtime? That's all?
No, this is, the 859 that you're seeing there is just inclusive of overtime itself.
Just overtime? So what's the total outstanding payroll balance that you need?
A million, a million is what I will like to get. But of course, I don't have that on my document. What I'm going off is the document that I provided you all.
But that million is to cover all 2014 prior-year payroll obligations?
Yes.
So we have 860 in overtime, but then we have another 140 in hazardous and night diff?
That's correct.
For 2014?
2014.
So it does come out to a million?
That's correct.
Okay. So I just wanted to firm that up because-
And I apologize for not clarifying that.
Okay. Because also, too, I think with the line of questioning with Senator Uggan, it was assumed that 860 was an okay number, but you need a million to close the books for 2014?
That is correct.
On the payroll side? Okay. That's all, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Senator Uggan?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Your budget increase, Mr. Augustine, from fiscal year 14 to 15 was in the amount of, aside from the 908,000 overtime? What was your budget increase that this legislature provided?
It was like 4.5 million from 2014 to 2015.
Okay. 4.5 million dollars?
That's correct.
Now, all 53 new personnel recruits are slotted for uniform DOC personnel?
That's correct.
Okay. So looking at an annualized salary plus the benefits, you're talking about 1.8 million right off the top for the additional 53?
That's correct.
Okay. Which is a roundabout figure, FYI?
Yes.
Based on a $26,000 annual salary plus the benefit?
Sure.
Now, looking at that, and then looking at your actual payments, and this is where, Mr. Chairman, I think the, there has to be some slight, I guess, reconciliation of the numbers, because based on the DOI receipt of 708,000 plus 860,000, that would add up to 1.5 million in overtime payments. That excludes the document before us that says in February, actual payment was about $300,000, correct? Mrs. Augustine, in overtime?
You're looking at February?
February, the month of February?
Senator, what do you see there?
On your sheet? Just go down the line, unless that's accumulated overtime, not actual payment?
I think they're running about 300 a month.
So about 300 a month?
Yes. That's correct.
So I certainly, I certainly hope that your budget increase of $4 million matches the hiring of the three additional personnel, because we know and we understand the requirement for personnel. So in terms of looking at the overall numbers, whether it's 3 million dollars a month or a year, in terms of your accumulated, $300,000 a month, in terms of your accumulated overtime, and then you extrapolate that and you add the personnel, and then you look at the offsets, because you will always, as a government agency, require overtime payments. So you're trying to keep it to a minimum.
Yes.
And I hope your minimum is under the threshold of half a million dollars, because just thinking about the numbers, generally speaking, you know, we're looking at $4 million, boom. You're talking about $2 million off already in terms of taking care of your personnel. You still have your uniform expense, you still have operations, you still have to provide them with the tools, the equipment, the firearms, the weaponry, whatever else is required for your personnel so that they're properly equipped to protect the people of WOMP. So just looking at that and looking at your fiscal year 15, one final question. Aside from the 908,000, aside from the 860,000, which is a carryover overtime obligation for fiscal year 14 that hopefully will be able to erase by the passage of this legislation, and with your existing budget allocation of $4 million, do you anticipate that we'll be here July or August asking for additional overtime compensation?
And that's a good question, Senator. I don't anticipate to be here July or August asking for an additional.
And I know, and I qualify that statement anticipation, because we don't know what the actual situation may be. You may need your personnel for emergencies that we certainly hope will never, ever happen.
Absolutely.
But certainly, I recognize the numbers, and I certainly encourage you to stay within the numbers, but the bottom line is your mission. And your mission is to protect our people and keep the criminals behind bars, so that in fact, our people are not scared in terms of being able to move around in our community. So I thank you for all your effort, not only your uniform police DOC personnel, but also all of your personnel at your facility. I think that you provide a critical service, and I certainly hope that if this body decides in its infinite wisdom to allow DOC to construct a different facility, that certainly your personnel requirement would not continue to be at that threshold of 197, only because of modern technology. So thank you again for your comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator.
If you all will allow the Chair to just ask one strange question. If and when you pay the overtime, how many of the officers do you expect will use that as an opportunity to retire finally?
I will say probably zero, Senator. I'd probably say zero.
No. Because I'd be told at the gym that some of them are waiting for their overtime and they're going to retire.
I would encourage them not to.
Mr. Chair, can I have a follow-up question? You listed in fiscal year 2014 that you had received then compact monies of 708,000. Do you anticipate any dollar amount and what that dollar amount would be for this fiscal year?
From the compact impact, Speaker?
Yes.
I can't answer that at this point. I do anticipate to receive it, but until I have it in hand, then I can say I got it. Every year, my understanding is I do receive a compact impact every year, and if I'm not mistaken, I think it's a million every year.
Okay. Well, that's good to know. So, but in 2014, you received 700,000, so anywhere between 700 to $1 million you might receive this fiscal year?
That's correct, Speaker.
Is that something that you've put in a request, or is that something that's automatic?
It's automatic.
It's, thank you.
Yes.
Any other question of the Director of Corrections?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Mrs. Augustine, thank you for your patience. But the reimbursement level for federal reimbursement as a result of providing that additional support to detain federal prisoners, that's separate and apart from the 708, correct?
That's, yes.
Okay. And that amounts to about?
Whoa, I'd like to say it's 6,000 per month, somewhere around there. If I'm not mistaken, I could get you the definite answer tomorrow.
No, I'm sure the Chairman has it, because it was budgeted. I just wanted to make sure that there's an understanding that, yes, you have your budget allocation of $4 million plus, you have your 908,000 for overtime for fiscal year 15.
Yes.
You will have your 800 minimum, either $1 million or 860,000, to erase your obligation for fiscal year 14 overtime. And then, in anticipation, you also have some additional resources that you do receive as a result of reimbursements from the federal government or from the US District Court.
For federal, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other question? None? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator. I will, thank you.
We'll take a short recess. We'll take a short recess.
Says till nine AM tomorrow?
All right, any objection, nine AM tomorrow morning?